Kimberly, and I'm Dr. Kimberly Rizzo, School Board. I wanted to begin by acknowledging the attentive work of our 12-member search committee over the last five months that brought us here tonight. This committee has worked tirelessly since the spring to bring us to this point. So I think we, if we don't mind, I'll have a small round of applause. A large round of applause. We want to volunteer, so it gives credit to our community that so many people are so interested. If you were not able to attend the meeting and greet last night, both candidates spoke to the thoughtfulness of our process, the thoroughness in the thoughtfulness of our process. I am very proud of that feedback, and that was the intention of the board when we created the subcommittee. The format for the evening is 50 minutes of questions designed for no follow-up to allow for equitable comparison between candidates. Then there'll be a five-to-10-minute questions from candidates. Then we will switch candidates and repeat the process. Then we will adjourn the public session at the conclusion of the second interview. Then the board will deliberate in a non-public session. Our first candidate is the current superintendent in the Clonville School District. Please give a long welcome to Dr. Kimberly Rizzo-Solander. Thank you. I would like the teachers of the board members to please introduce themselves to our candidates, starting with Jim Walker.
I am Walker, and I can give a round of applause to the students.
Thank you. Take it to Perry.
Jeff, one, two.
Hi, I'm Mary Nolte, a new member. I'm a U of H nursing professor and a major statistician in the McDonald's or district kindergarten this year at Eastlake.
Hi, I'm Hope Ann Axe. I have two children still in the district at high school. I've just started grade in September 19. So obviously, if you're a school board, you might want to switch ways around.
I am Brian French. Serving second term with school board, so I'm a fifth-year student now. Two, three, is an elementary school, so two second graders.
Hi, I'm Lisa Round. I'm a member of the board. I have a third grade in the charter and a eighth grade in the middle school. And I'm a science teacher.
Hi, I'm Betty Boots. I have two kids in middle school. I'm just starting my third year on board, and I have a senior course that I'm listening to.
Hi, Kimberly. I'm Arva Vaidy. I'm the vice chair of the school board, chair of search training. I have two children in the middle school, and I'm a science teacher.
Thank you, board members. Just to let everyone know, our two candidates spent the day in our school district today, meeting and greeting with everyone from elementary school all the way through to the high school and the district academy. So the first question, Kimberly, is share with us what you learned or observed about our district today. Do you think you would be a good fit?
So I actually thought, probably after the first meeting interview, that based on, this is my sports paper, so this is all about you. So based on the research I had done preliminarily, it looked like I would be a good fit. After today, spending the day touring the schools, spending the day with your incredible one testament to all of your students, that I would be an excellent fit. I think that the community itself, as well as the direction that the community wants to go, and every person I spoke to had talked to me about equity and moving forward in that direction. What I learned today was that besides that you have incredible students, is that the staff, or particularly your administrators, so I have the option to speak to Tatum, and Nathan, George, at least, sorry, I'm 21, I don't know, Mary Lyons and Nancy are just in any other staff member, and that is completely dedicated to the students and to the district.
Next question is, Kimberly. We heard from you last night that some of the steps you'd take in your early days in our district would be to build a board, collaborate with stakeholders. Would you share with us what other priorities you would have in your first semester year where you see yourself in the district by the end of your first semester?
So outside of building Board four, so really, the first, the first year of a superintendent's job, particularly from the outside, is to learn all about the district, understand the district data, understand the district finances. So it would really be my first semester or my first quarter would really be about building relationships, about starting to put the foundation in for a highly collaborative culture, or building the foundation that is already here. And then it would be to learn, learn about the district. And then what I would really like to do, and obviously I would put all of this into the entry plan, would be start the strategic planning process that would really, because that's actually a year-long process in and of itself, so that the community and the staff and students all have opportunity to participate in clearly outlining what the next five years of the district are clearly going to look like for more.
Next question is, Andrew. Oh, I'm going to do this. Let me do this. Unfortunately, one of our board members is running a little late. He's not at for fresh to shore. You talked a lot about being out, being visible within the community and being with students and staff going forward. What does being visible in a district, the size of what it would look like to you?
Okay, so I would keep in mind that the district that I am coming from is actually the largest geographic district in the state of New Hampshire, so being visible is always the challenge. When I talk about visibility, first and foremost, I talk about being visible to staff and students and with parents in schools. I think that my next question, or my question back in response to that is, what does it mean to you? Because it's one of those words that sometimes you hear, well, you need to be visible. Okay, so does that mean you want me at the board? Does that mean you want me at the city council? What, where do you want me to be? And then together, we need to talk about why. You know, one of the reasons to go to athletic events is to be visible, but also to build relationships. So I think that's the important place to be. One of the reasons you might be at city council is also to build relationships, but to make sure that city council and student department are working in harmony. So I'm not trying to dodge the question, though, what I'm trying to say is that is to, you have to have a common understanding of what visibility means and why we're being visible at different, at different events. I think it's dependent times, it's challenging depending on how committees are a part of the school. So sometimes what I've seen, and I'm fortunate that this has not happened to me, but I've seen other districts, is people will say you need to be visible to the superintendent, but then there's 15 committees, and the committees meet each night of the week, and so they miss the concert, and they miss the athletic event because they had a obligation to be at that meeting. So it's definitely, oh, it needs to be mutually decided upon, mutually defined, and it should involve both superintendent, the board, but it should also involve community members saying, you know, we need to see, Kimberly, act this the best. It's important to us.
Thank you. The next question goes to Brian. I'm sorry, thank you.
As a superintendent, what steps would you take to ensure that the board goals are translated into the classroom and improving the school's overall experience?
So I think that goals are something that needs to be mutually decided upon, and a lot of how we see goals being translated into the classroom is going to depend on the process by which we develop them. So one of the reasons I said this strategic plan would be really important, because that is really where you should, over the next five years, you start your goals from. And then those goals should, and this, of course, is what has worked for me, in my opinion, but should work from the classroom up to the board. So your classroom goals, the people that know what the greatest needs for students are, are in the classroom, they are in the building, they know what's happening. So if the school board had put a goal together that said, well, you want 100% achievement on the DRA by the end of first grade, that, in translating that into the classroom, might be impossible if at the end of first grade, you know, at the beginning of first grade, the DRA is only at 25% sufficiency. So you have to be careful about how you develop those goals, for them to be translated properly. When you develop goals through a strategic planning process, they're community goals, and then we work from the classroom, and on annual goals from the classrooms with the board group. So right now, the board has a goal about around equity. So what it means, how you're going to see that transfer into the classroom is really about getting people together, saying, okay, how do we define it? What does that need to look like to us? What's that outcome? What's our benchmark? And then where are we right now in the classrooms? And now let's start to put goals together to get there.
Moving things around.
Oh, okay. Sorry, maybe there's a lot. All right. Brian.
Yeah, fine. Thank you for being here. How do you assess when you need to stay the course or change your approach?
I'm sorry.
How do you assess when you need to stay the course, when you need to change your approach?
Is there a specific example, or just in general?
General.
So I think when you are in any kind of situation, you need to look at what's, where you want to do. So if, if the goal, whether it's long-term or it's an objective, if the goal is to have everybody vaccinated by the end of the year, which is not a reasonable goal, but if that is the goal, and, you know, you say, we want everyone to, to be in this situation by May 1st, and in September, and you're at 5%, you need to look and examine, okay, what's happening? Why are we at 5%? What, what's in place to incentivize this? What isn't in place? What changes do we need to make? And are we doing what needs to be done to get there? And what are the benchmarks to come along with? If you continue at that level, then you start to look, stay the course until it is very clear, like, there's no way we're going to hit this target. And that's when you start to say, okay, why, why are we not hitting the target? What do we need to put in place differently? How do we change? How do we, how do we shift in order to meet the goal? And then the question, the other question, is the goal reasonable? Is this, is this something that we are truly dedicated to here? And look at anything in that way. So you could look at initiative, why, why is this working or why isn't it? Do we have high buy-in from our community? Do we have buy-in from our teachers? If we have high buy-in and low results, what's, what's happening? If we have low results and low buy-in, then it's time to really change what we're doing. If we have high, high results and low buy-in, then that's a, that's an issue problem, and that's a place that you need to stay your course, say, okay, we, you know, we're getting great results from this, but we seem to have low buy-in. What are we going to choose here? Are we wanting to communicate? Is this professional development? Is it application? What's the difference?
Kimberly, can you help that a little bit? Can you drop down and share a time? And I need to see that from that. Did you share a time with us when you had to address an issue that, or a situation, your recommendation, where you saw a negative impact on students? What steps to take to implement change and recovery?
So there's going to, there's been a number of different times that that's going to be. We had a systematic technology issue that we were facing. What we did is we looked at all of the pieces around that. What we found in that situation was that students were not getting access, students and staff actually were not getting access they needed because of a belief system that was in place regarding who should have access to certain information, who should have access to certain software, what they need to do in order to get that. There's a lot of reasons that that belief was held. So what we did was we, you went through, and you looked at all of the different pieces that we, that instructional staff believed students and staff needed to have. And then we juxtaposed that next to the belief systems that were stopping that access. And we really had some hard conversations about what needed to change. Because if it was an access problem, but access was absolutely necessary, what do we need to do to make sure access was safe? But in, is this a, I believe that people should have to X, Y, and Z, this is a belief? Or was there a threat to our systems and/or students themselves? Because software and online could be a lot of a worse situation. And how do we resolve? So we basically went through, almost line by line, on the bottom of the budget, each piece, and we resolved those issues. It was a few months. It was not something that happened overnight, until we got to where we were, actually, ready for COVID. Thank goodness that it was resolved before that, because it did allow us to leverage our technology, our software, and our access in a way that students and staff had what they needed, what they needed.
What does equity look like in schools to you? And what are your strategy and outcomes for narrowing equity gaps?
Sure. So equity, when I came to, now, you know, actually, I can't help her too, but when I was asked to take the reins as superintendent, one of the things that I was asked to do was set up a ship in conjunction with Dr. Anne Corris, who is the assistant superintendent. The vision that we presented at the time was really to become a model of educational excellence. We defined that by saying that all students would have access and would be in high-quality learning environments and have opportunities for high, for high levels of learning. So that is how we started our journey towards what we call EDG, reviewing and examining educational equity in our school district. We then took a systematic approach and looked at equity, works with everybody, what we defined, what equity was and what that meant to, on that. We then took and looked at multiple data points and said, based on our definition of equity, so almost math, we thought it was a lot of everything, based on our definition of equity and these data points, is this where we want to? So we did a gap analysis of that information. Based on that gap analysis, we then said, these are the demographics of students we want to do. This is the way that we're going to meet them. And I can say that right, right before COVID, we were starting to see movement in that area. You should know, though, that it wasn't just one of the things that we had to feel that layer of, of that around equity. One of the things that we found out, that equity didn't just impact our students, but it also impacted our staff. And for us, that was something that was more surprising. So in order to address that, one of the things we needed to do is we went through our budgets, and here we really did, go line by line, to really examine how, or how to allocate funds in specific buildings. So across the 11 buildings, where were we allocating funds? Why were we then allocating them that way? And were there different ways we needed to allocate? And I do think I used this example a little last night, so I apologize for your jumbliness. But equity does not, at least in Congress, as we've identified, does not necessarily mean equal. With two middle schools, one of the things that we looked at pretty deeply were our home curriculars and extra curriculars in that class. And what we found out was that there were inequities, but that didn't mean that all of a sudden we said, oh, you're going to spend this much for student at Great Works School and this much for student at South Meadow School. What we said was, what do the students need in order to close that gap around equity? And so we spent the last three widget cycles working on that equitable fund piece and really fine-tuning how we shift dollars, shift resources to provide equitable apartments. I could talk a little more, I'd like to have a ride into those kinds of areas if you want. So then after, are you sure? Okay, so then, I'm just going to take this question. So then, after we have done that, again, we've done that over the last 10 years, we go back, we've gone back and we examined that and made sure that here were the benchmarks that we talked about regarding equity, and are we needing nice benchmarks? And in a couple places, we had it there. So right now, what we're doing is we're really digging into that and saying, okay, what, what did we miss? What, this, we believed, as we were doing all of this work, that this should have moved, we call it move the needle, that's what you're doing, move the needle. And this should have moved the needle. Why isn't it? So what else is under here that, and maybe it's not an equity issue, maybe you don't have the resources, maybe the staff, it's professional development around them, but why is this not happening properly, or the way that we anticipated it would?
But just steer this toward budgeting, because that's what the next question is about. As you know, budgeting is a major role at the board. Would you share a time when you had to advocate strongly for your budget? Can you walk us through the role played and the specific steps that you may have taken to our support, and tell us what the outcome was? And would you mind just repeating the questions for me, so I can just keep?
Sure, absolutely.
Let's see. Would you like to share a time when you had to advocate strongly for your budget? Walk us through the role played and the specific steps that you may have taken to our support, and then share the outcome.
Well, we're going to talk about one of my, actually, favorite things to talk about, one that I'm so very proud of, and it's a piece of the budget. So first of all, I should explain, for us, my advocacy is with the budget process itself. We begin our budget process, which is a little different from us, because we're not a state. But we begin the budget process actually in July, and that budget process is directly related to our goals, so or and/or our strategic plan. So one of our strategic plan goals over the last five years outside of equity, and actually inclusive of equity, has been around preschool opportunities. So in 2016, we noticed that there was significant decline in students coming to Keenerburg in their letter recognition, their understanding that letters represented sounds, and their color recognition. So probably for us, that was actually, it was the first time any of us had ever experienced students not knowing the difference between colors. So we decided as part of that, that we were going to start the steps towards preschool. So our budget process starts July, tied directly to our long and short-term goals. And we meet, first we start, we say, this is, we meet with the board, where we're going to get started. What, what is the guidance? So based on that guidance, I then go back to the administrative team, so together, and they start to prepare for their budgets. And we start right then saying, okay, these are the goals, you know, the board is saying X, how are we going to do that? Or if we exceed it, how are we going to explain it? So then principals building in, building based to start for the building, they create their budget, then they sit with myself and the SAB team, and we go through literally line by line, we do the faculty work, we check everything. And then we actually stop there for, or pause there, we bring all of the administrators together, and we look at where we are aligned with the guidance and our goals. How far off are we? How far over are we? I would love to say how far under are we, but that's never happened before. So once we're there, we then prioritize as entire administrators, say, based on our goals, based on what we know is to exceed, and based on the guidance we have been given, we now are going to say, here is our priority list of what we need. We then go into an all-day session on November 7th. That was the first Saturday in November. And we then take the board through the budget, our proposed budget, line by, not line by line, but object by object. We talk about what's gone up, we talk about what's gone down, and we explain the process that we've come through and the priorities we established, and why we established those. Each, as part of the budget book, which is structured there, for each thing that we are adding to the budget, we actually create a justification. And that justification talks about what the present situation is, what is the present state? How does this request move our goals forward? How does it align with the strategic plan? What is the cost estimate of it? And basically, what's the priority? This is preschool this year was the number one priority for us. We take that, and then that comes the board's budget. And then they go through, and they, and my job then comes to advocate for those priorities. And so what happens sometimes is they will say, well, what about, and I will have to say to the board that I was not identified as a priority this year, and this is That I was not identified as a priority this year and this is why. And we spent from November to end of December going through that. We have our budget airing in January and then what happens is once the budget is proposed. To, to the greater community, I then work to communicate and function with the board to communicate and advocate for each piece of that budget. And then we send videos out, we do all sorts of things, they're online. There's a great one about preschool. Did I answer, did I answer all the parts of the question?
It is, it takes a minute. Um, could you share with us?
Oh, sure. So over the last, so, so again, you tend to do things in stages and products. Um, so on this forum, we will have be adding the last three. I hope, just once it gets spoken up, the last three classrooms for preschool. Um, it will allow us to have a pitch on preschool spots, um, beginning in September. So yeah, some lots of positive energy up for, I guess, but on that.
Yes. Hi there. Please introduce yourself. If you have a question, come on in.
Hi there, uh, I'm looking for, uh. Um, I have a parent, I, you know, I am a parent, I have a child at, uh, down there in school. Um. Um, I apologize for being late, um, my, I went to my uncle's week, um, so, so. So yeah, I, and I'm an attorney, I don't know what the introduction for, but I'm an attorney, I do child protection work now and listen to family law. Um, and so this is my first, uh, year on the board, something new. Um, and so I guess my question is, uh, what are your expectations of the board?
So my expectations of the board are to work in conjunction with me. Uh, to lead the district in a positive direction and to, and, and. And my expectations are always around children. And to remember that our work has to be child focused. That it can sometimes get, get caught up in controversy. Whether that's about masks or whether that's about vaccinations or, or whether that's about technology. Um, we get caught up in that back and forth through parents. Um, and sometimes, or whether or not someone's tax release is too hard. But ultimately, the school board's responsibility is to be the stewards of the tri schools and the children in them. And make sure they are receiving the best education that we can possibly provide. So that's, that's decision number one. In this specific situation, as a new, as an incoming new superintendent. I would be looking for the board and expect the board to help build relationships across the community. And to be able to help me better understand, um, when the, um. Problems are going to arise and what those problems could be. Um, and then third, obviously is, is to meet your statutory obligations. So the board has multiple statutory obligations, top three being set policy, two set budget and two evaluate superintendent. Um, so obviously I want to make sure that we're meeting those. And then finally, um, to have a clear, transparent, transparent relationship with the superintendent. They don't always have to be wonderful and friendly to one another, but we should be civil, we should communicate well. Um, we should make sure that we have a thorough understanding of what we're saying about our work and why we're saying this. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be, um, conversational. Those would be my expectations, just little ones.
So, um, asking one, thanks, Kelly. Uh, thank you, Kimberly. Um, so you just mentioned communication, I want to follow on that. And I, I want to ask. Um, what's your, what is your turnaround time with communication and received from staff and parents? And how do you deal with managing incoming communication?
Um, so my rule of thumb is outside emergencies, 24 to 48 hours. Um, so obviously if a parent is calling and they're saying something happened to your child on the playground. That's emergent and I need to take that call or I need to answer that email right away. Um, so one of the. People have different opinions about now, particularly as it is around the superintendent. My feeling is if a staff member or a parent is emailing you as a superintendent. You have an op, obligation to get back to them because whether or not it's a priority for you. It is a priority for that person and they have to be at risk to reach out to you as a superintendent. And need to respectful of that risk and say, okay, how can I help you? What, what's, what's, what's happening? And is there an issue I need to resolve? How can I make your life a little easier today? Um, recently, my, my SAU staff was trying to convince me. Um, that one of the ways that I could maybe get some things off my plate was sort of, I feel a little captive rate. Um, was for me, don't need to answer your email in 24 to 48 hours. Well, wouldn't you know that that, we got a community forum, that's about two or three days later. And I said, okay, okay, you're right, I, I know, I can, I can stretch it for three, four days, maybe a week. One of the parents got up and she said, one of the things that, that resonated so well with her was that she emailed me. And I had gotten back to her, in this case, it was like 25 minutes. And that was, it, it, it did so much for her. And when I say don't agree on a lot of things, myself and this parent, we don't agree on a whole lot of things. But that was so important to her and it did so much to build that relationship of trust and respect. But I have now gone back to 24 to 48 hours for staff and for parents. And if they're taking the time to get to the right school, then we need to be respectful and write back. Even if all you're writing back, so even if on snow day, I get a lot of emails on snow days. Or sometimes on non-snow days, if it's snowing, um, it, even if it's just, I use so much for your feedback, I'll consider that in future. It doesn't, just so that they know you read it. Is that, and I'm not perfect, sometimes it's, you know, 52 hours. So that is a lot.
I wanted to give you a chance, I know we had a lot of questions, but last night. Um, had a great turnout last night. And right now, and I want you to feel and to have that opportunity, if there's any questions you want to follow along that we asked right now. Before, um, see good questions for us and for our district, I just wanted to touch on that. And if you want to remind her, we have questions related to, to affiliate reports then. What would that first semester look like for you? What is being visible, mean? How do you ensure that the board goals go all the way down to the student experience? How do you determine when to stay in partnership? How do you deal with the challenging situation in which the student outcome was not positive and correct that? Was equity evenly? Talk about your advocacy for budgets. What is the role of board and the superintendent? So there it is. So just wanted to give you a chance to follow up on that.
So I guess I have, I have. First, for questions I have, but those are not pronounced, they weren't quoted here. So I would really like to hear, um. What your expectations, particularly around community, because that's where I get to find all possible issues. With the superintendent to the board, with the superintendent to staff, with the superintendent to students. With the superintendent to parents and the greater.
Any, okay, now. Um, I think one of the issues that I'm sure all school districts face today is social media. And how, um, word gets out in various avenues on social media. And what, not just the superintendent, but what can we all do to ensure that accuracy, facts. Invalid information is getting out to our parents, our students, our staff, our faculty. Um, to everyone that's involved in the school, um, community and the community at large, you know, um, if it's something drastic. And it could get in the newspaper and, you know, how exactly can we handle that kind of communication with that community? Um, and when I came to this school, you know, we didn't have Facebook, we didn't have phones and all that. Um, so it was different, you know, you could just either call or, or write a letter or, but it's different today. So with this expansion of how people communicate with each other. Um, so not only saying the superintendent should do it, but how can we all do it? Um, to ensure that valid, accurate information is getting out to everyone. Um, so I don't know if you have any.
Sure. Sure, I can, I can address that.
No, maybe, you know, that's an issue we have and I'm sure it's an issue also.
Yes. Sure, I can tell you that, um. We had about two weeks ago, I guess there is a season or half, um, COVID timelines are just confusing. Um, we had a situation actually blow up on Facebook. It was a situation that had actually been resolved, um, at our high school in fall. So we were, we, it was, we got the lines that it took, we were like, we gotta resolve this. Well, what happened is we, is as it was resolved with high school parents, it kind of trickled into the community and kind of then. Cool life of its own over Christmas vacation. So what, what I did was I took, I basically went over social media and I went point by point by point. Because it was about student safety. So if it hadn't been about like, I don't know. The art classroom tables, I may not have taken such a, um, stand, a quick stance. But I went through point by point by point, what was purling up over social media. I sent out a very thorough communication and I basically went one, two. And I said, let's talk about student safety. This was the situation. This was when it was reported, this was what actually happened in situations like this. You know, this would typically be our response. One of the other things that I did in this communication was really try to thoroughly explain FERBA. Because what was happening is people wanted to know that that child was not going to be a safe. And I simply, I just, to end by saying, here's FERBA. What I can tell you is in situations like this, this would normally be how most schools, including ours, would react. I cannot tell you what happened to this individual child. What I can tell you is that I came here for 13 years. And that student safety is, oh, it's student and staff safety is always the most important part of my job. So that's, that's what I have responded to situations like that. They are the most challenging situations we have. Um, in this case, one of the principal people that was blowing off steam on Facebook referred to. Our lovely high school principal, as he and Heather did not think that that was necessarily. An accurate description of, or, or that that person's opinion wasn't probably an accurate description. Didn't realize that Heather was heading that place. Oh, sure, yes. So my question was, your expectations about communication from the superintendent to you, the superintendent to staff, the community, students, parents.
I guess that's a follow up to what you said. Well, I guess I, I was just curious, um, you said that you did this line by line. And how, how did, you know, that on Facebook or, or how did you go, I guess I'm just curious how we handle it. You said you went through it, but like, how did you just have any of that, that? So we did an email, Parents Square, do you guys have some?
We have, um, we don't call it Parents Square, it's similar to Parents Square, it's a, it's a messenger out. We sent it to all the parents from five to 12, posted it first, um. It posted on the website for a little while. I've sent it out to the best communicators we have and always your best charlatan was the staff, essentially the staff. Um, and I also made sure that I sent it to simple people in the community, also that they would have that too. Um, I don't, I, what I, I actually also sent it.
That's all right. But.
Well, when we, when I sent anything out via, um, our school messenger. Um, I, we also do a post on, we have a VR convell, basically on Twitter and something called convell names. Um, so we will post things on those for a certain amount of time. Um, but in the emails here, one of the things I said was. We can't, we don't have a staffing available to, um. Respond to social media across, you know, all the different social media platforms that exist across nine communities. Um, so I did try to say, if you have a question or you have a concern, take a phone, send me an email. You will hear back in 24 to 48 hours. Answer your question, um, hopefully I share this communication to the preschool board. And that's been an area that has been targeted by us and by the district for recruitment of different teachers, from parents, from our principals. You know, from students that the education is something to work on and make better. So I think we're definitely looking forward to the opportunity to work with our next superintendent to identify how to end career or work as a parent. We've been working to try to develop strategies so that. Figure out the best way to reach out to people so that if that's them, the right information would be needed. We should be the right person to communicate those messages. And to try to deal better with exactly what you're talking about in terms of protecting student privacy and still getting people. You know, the clear information that they need so that they know their kids are safe and they feel like their questions are answered. So I think it's something we definitely look forward to. I just wanted to, that response to your question.
To the other end of your question, I will say, um, this is the community that wants response. And they want it almost immediately. And, and they have had that for years with the superintendent. So while I appreciate that you come from a larger district where your time is part of processing abilities. And your time is part of that key building tier. Um, I think you heard from the search committee and other interviews with you. That, um, you know, focus groups and surveys, communication has come up time and time again. I, I know that our teachers association president has made out to you that she is used to a very timely response. And so I think that that's what you would need to set the expectation for. It's pretty high bar here. Um, I'm not saying that 24 to 48 hours is not, and I know that you have gotten back very timely to us. But just to be very candid and honest with you, I think your staff, if they're reaching out to the superintendent, there's a good reason for that. And I'm not sure that today's is for no time to be waiting around to hear back from your superintendent.
Do you have another question?
I do. How do you define a facility? Disability. I think, I hear what you were saying, that it does depend upon expectations and goals and hearing the voices of everyone, what that looks like. For me, talk about a school district. The heart and soul are the students. And so visibility to me means being a genuine human presence in their experiences. That could be the person at the door as they enter.
That could be the person at the door as they enter, attending sporting events, attending steam days, sitting in on classes, but showing them that you've got their back, that your eyes are focused on intent that one, which is graduating kids that are ready for the next step. And I think that, when I think about visibility in our board goals, I think about making sure that students know who our superintendent is and that they know that there is a team of people along with their, the teachers, who are talking and making decisions in the best interests of their experiences in the district. So visibility is very much tightly interlinked.
Another question.
Um, no, I, why don't you go?
COVID and mental health. Um, we've all seen a situation where our students have suffered, um, because of the effects of COVID, being home in remote learning. Um, what have you done and what would you do here if, um, if you were here?
Yeah, so, um, we, and so social emotional learning has really, um, come to the forefront as it's a result of some of the, for lack of a better words, you put it, trauma that we have seen around COVID. All, all our students suffered somehow, some of them suffered significantly more through the pandemic. So what we have done, um, and we have cut, created, I don't think, tiered systems of support prior to this, that we have created a true multi-tiered system of support around social emotional learning and mental health that starts with basic beauty for all students. Much of that is around self-regulation and self-conception and having students understand where they're situated in the moment, so how we conduct developmentally. So I don't know for a second, in our classrooms, what it looks like is we have, um, charts for, for students in elementary school. Um, and there's, there's different tiers, make sure you see this before. And we really work with students to say, okay, where are you? And, and are you regulated enough to, to participate in your own life? I would say that to an elementary student, it's a little different than how we say it to a high school student. Um, so, so we do that for all of our students. Um, kind of that second tier is we've been doing a lot of groups and, and I don't mean like for charity, but, um, we have been doing for our little, our littlest students or youngest students, we've been doing, um, like groups and, and really, they kind of have lunch and we work with them on their social skills, saying please, that they can, in, in a small group setting and, and talking to them really about what it takes to be a member of a community. Because some of these children, so our students that have raised, some of them haven't actually been in a school building with other children before. And they're example great, they don't know how to be a member of a classroom community. Um, the elementary level two is kind of our tier one, we also use responsive classroom. For them to arrive to start the day and the day together. Um, how we are actually bringing that responsive classroom to the middle school component to that. We're bringing that as a tier one to our middle schools as well. Um, and then finally, um, for our students who are struggling most, we have, um, what's called the N I N A Systems of Care. And that is actually a wraparound familiar. Um, that is a wraparound service, we are very fortunate that we are part of a grant. Um, is what we have found, that's particularly after COVID, is that those students have the greatest need, but they also seem to have these, um, multitude of areas, not just mental health and not just self-regulation. Um, what they are, what they really need is almost, they optimize have additional medical needs. Um, that are often times, um, additional, um, food and nutrition needs, um, and, you know, they often time have some housing that are not meet that. Um, and so the N I N A Systems of Care works for the case manager for, um, students and we work in conjunction. So the school is at the table and all the, all the different services are at the table for this student and their family. So that is what we have started to put together. It's not, I, that all sounded so wonderful, but it's not all perfect. It's not altogether perfectly aligned K to twelve at this point, but that is the direction that we're.
Kimberly, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Kimberly, we really appreciate you leading you and having the opportunity to listen to your very, very well, remarks, very, very well researched and obviously you have a lot of experience. And I just want to thank you for this process.
Well, thank you so much. It, it really has been an incredible process. I really appreciate the time and the, the attention that you're giving us. Hiring as a superintendent is, is a challenge in the best of times. Um, and right now, we all know that these are not necessarily the best times to find a highly qualified individual to lead this system. Do you think that would be a great fit with the authority and experience of you? And, um, thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you.